You then think, oh, that's really unfair because he doesn't know. He doesn't, you know, I'm forever saying that.
They're still a day of class.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm forever saying that statement, like, I'm like, you can't get angry at him because you can't tell him that what he's doing is... He can't really be naughty because he doesn't know. He's pushing the boundaries and he knows that he's pushing the boundaries.
Yeah.
But he doesn't know that what he's doing is naughty. Like, so I'm like, you can't, you know, you can't get annoyed with it. Easier said than done. How old is he, the five?
And, oh my god, she's like, most difficult part. She's got me, and she's got me making, doing a birthday party, which I absolutely, yeah, it was a day. And it's every, every, every day, it's like, "Mummy, on my birthday party", and it's just... It's just, it's, it's costing me an absolute... Princess party. It's the worst thing.
Right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's policy board. Just before the meeting, then, I just want to make sure, particularly for the members of the public here tonight, in the case of a far, a bell will ring. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately, following the green far exit signs to the assembly point, which is by the war memorial on Duke Street. If you need any assistance, please let us know, and don't use the lifts. Remain at the assembly point and don't attempt to return to the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but you need to make sure that you only film the councillors and the officers in this part of the building. And make sure you've switched off your mobile phones as well, please. So apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. I've had apologies from councillors Gulliver, Knight, Roberts and Whitehead.
Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting, does anybody have any points they want to make about those minutes? Okay, I'll take those as being correct. Well, we've come to public questions. Hopefully, you've all seen public questions that have come out. We have four public questions. Are they all here tonight?
I'm not sure all of them are here.
Okay, so we'll hear, we'll hear your questions, and then we'll have a presentation about the master plan at Great Lees. And hopefully, lots of your questions will be answered during that presentation, but if not, we'll address them specifically afterwards. So, Mr. Booley, would you like to ask your question? Oh, it's not here, sorry, someone moved, I thought that was you. Mr., we'll note Mr. Booley's question, Mr. Pugh.
Chair, if it's okay, would it be possible for Mr. Daniels to go first? Because there's a natural flow from his question to statement onto mine, is that okay?
I'm more than happy to. Mr. Daniels.
Where would you like me?
In front of the microphone, please.
Okay.
If you'd like to give your name and address, please.
Well, I'm speaking on behalf of the applicants.
Okay.
Good evening, members, and thank you to officers for the comprehensive report that's been prepared. I'm here to speak in support of the Great Lees Master Plan on behalf of the consortium of landowners and developers. The master plan represents the culmination of a great deal of detailed design and technical work. The final proposals have been developed alongside both council and county level offices. There has also been extensive engagement more widely involving key local stakeholders and members of the public. Therefore, we're naturally pleased that officers are endorsing the master plan, subject to a small number of further considerations. The consortium wishes to make the following comment on these. Upgrading of Chase Side Bridge to improve accessibility for cyclists, paragraph 3.33 of the report. In response to this further consideration, the consortium are happy for the final master plan version to include a requirement to investigate in more detail the feasibility and viability of improvements to the Chase Side Bridge route for cyclists within the context of the retention of the existing bridge structure. We trust that this suggestion is helpful and can be agreed, and we request that members support the officer recommendations. I'm joined by the master plan architect, Mr. Pugh, and highway specialist alongside representatives from the consortium here this evening. Together, we would be very happy to answer any detailed queries. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you. Yeah, so my name is Simon Pugh from David Locke Associates. I'm a partner there with a master planning consultant working on the production of the Great Lees Master Plan for the wider consortium of developers and landowners. Again, good evening, members. In addition to Joseph Daniel's statement, I'd like to cover a couple of additional points also relating to Site 7A. Firstly, in relation to building heights and density. We suggest the inclusion of clarifying text to the legend within the building heights plan in response to comments proposing lowering of heights along the northern edge of the two neighbourhood centre parcels within the document. The height plan currently sets up to a maximum of three stories for the neighbourhood centre parcels, which are not set building heights but up to parameters only. It's normal practice that building heights and specific building locations are determined through rigorous process of PPAs and planning application work, informed by technical assessments, including heritage assessment and landscape and visual assessment, undertaking testing of set viewpoints and provision of building wirelines. We propose the building heights including, included in the document in relation to this point remain unchanged, but are qualified by the following additional wording to ensure a robust and defendable position for the planning authority. Actual building heights and locations in the context of sensitive receptors listed buildings to be tested and determined by technical input through planning application preparation to include landscape and visual impact assessment. Secondly, in relation to the access to the northern parcel of 7A from Mawsham Hall Lane, the landowner is disappointed that officers cannot at this time, this time, support the proposed access, despite significant evidence and benefits put forward. In the absence of a robust high-rise reasoning for this decision, we accept the removal of the access for the purposes of approving the framework master plan, but the landowner reserves the right to pursue this issue further through the planning application at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Compton-Cook? No, not here. Okay, we note her question and her comments. Thank you, everybody. Any declarations of interest from members? Okay, so we move on then to the item for tonight, the Great Lees Master Plan. Mr. Perry, who?
Thank, thank you, Chair. I'm just an elector behind your chair, so, thank you, Chair, good evening, everyone. My name's Matthew Perry, planning officer within strategic development, here this evening to present the master plan for Great Lees, strategic growth site policy seven. I'll start off to give some context for benefit of everyone. So, what we have on the screen is a split, or the local plan policy designations, split between 7A, B, C and D. I'm just going to briefly describe those. Obviously, we are in Great Lees. Just north of the settlement, you can see to the south of this image. On the western side, you will see 7A, known as Land at Mawsham Hall. To the east, north-east, you'll see 7B, land off London Road. 7C, land north and south of Banter's Lane. Just a quick explanation of that is that 7C does split Banter's Lane. As you can see, 7C north just breaches into an area known as Banter's Field, just north of Banter's Lane. 7D, known as land east of Main Road, is pretty much built out now, Bellway scheme. Don't intend to concentrate too much on that. As I said, there is some relevance to access for 7C, I'll discuss later, but that is, as I say, pretty much built out now as part of previous permissions. Briefly touch on policy requirements. I don't intend to spend too long on these, I'll just pull out the key elements of the policy requirements for each of the three allocations to be discussed this evening. Those are all within the local plan, so I say these are abbreviated, summarized for the benefit of this evening, just to give members and members of public a flavour. So 7A, we're dealing with around 750 new homes, travelling showperson sites referred to as TSP for short during the report. TSP site for five plots, new neighbourhood centre, primary school with co-located early years and childcare nursery. A requirement to co-locate that neighbourhood centre with primary school at a location close to existing links. Main vehicle access taken from Mawsham Hall Lane, pedestrian cycle connections and a well-connected internal layout which allows for bus priority measures. Similar comments for 7B. Just note that it is for 250 specialist residential homes for older persons. That's the requirement as part of the allocation. Main vehicle access from London Road, pedestrian cycle connections as per 7A and a well-connected layout as per 7A and the others. 7C, we have around 100 new homes proposed. Main vehicle access proposed within the local plan allocation was from Banter's Lane or through Site 7D via Main Road. I'll touch upon this later in the presentation. Pedestrian cycle links, as I've said before, well-connected layout allowing for bus priority measures, which I'll briefly discuss later as well. Just wanted to touch upon land ownership because it is relevant to the jigsaw that's been put together in terms of the allocations. The office report notes this, it's all within the public domain. We have green areas owned by John Holmes as well as land shown in orange under John Holmes' control also. As you'll see, that covers both 7B and the north element of 7C in that position. We have 7A, slightly west of John Holmes' ownership, controlled by Bellway and Red Row, 50/50 split. And across the other side, we have the blue areas, or the light blue area, controlled by Bellway. The darker blue area already kind of built out by Bellway, currently, well, it's like, known as the Furlongs Development, so that's pretty much completed at this time. And just note there is a darker or purple area seen as 7C, which is in completely separate ownership, and that is controlled by Landvest Developments. That will explain some of the access arrangements that are within the report. So in terms of the main diagram, members and members of the public be familiar with this framework plan, which is basically the main diagram that you will see within the master plan document. I just briefly want to touch upon some of the key components. As I say, it's set out within the report. It's very wanting to see in the master plan, but we're just giving a flavour this evening. 7A, we have a mix of uses. The yellow blocks parcels showing to be residential blocks, as you would expect. Within the centre of 7A, we have the blue area denoting the school location. Just to the right of that, to the east, we have the neighbourhood centre shown in the pink colour with a further parcel of residential as we reach New Roundabout. The bus loop is shown in red, but I'll touch upon that in the accessibility section shortly. And we have various routes permeating that through spine route and other road networks through there. 7B, to the east of London Road, we have, well, it is mainly residential, split into roughly two parcels there as per the master plan, which represents a current application, live application for the northern segment for 190 units, again referred to in the report. And 7C, again, predominantly residential. So, the office report talks about the parcels. It says that officers are broadly, in, well, officers are broadly accepting of those parcels, subject to some tweaks as notified in the further considerations. Thank you. I'll just briefly revisit the, so the conclusion of the report was that the parcels are seen as broadly acceptable, subject to a few tweaks as identified in the report. So, sort of pull out some key issues from the report. So the report notes there's three key issues that are sought to be dealt with in the front part of the report. One being location of the travelling showperson site. Two, the extension of built form beyond the settlement boundary in the northern, northern segment. And three, the access to the northern parcel of 7A from Mawsham Hall Lane. The report does go through these in some detail, just briefly want to touch upon these this evening, just to give a bit of a brief overview of those key points. So in terms of the TSP site, located within an area known locally as the Island Site. So, the report outlines, well, reflects what the mass, what the mass plan document basically evaluates difficulties within 7B in locating the TSP site within the designated allocation. Also, the report notes that the TSP site is located outside of the allocation. It is located within a special policy area also. The image to the left shows the black line, which navigates around the racecourse land as well as some quarry land to the north. But that black line does obviously cross the 131 to encompass the Island Site to a full extent, right down to the, the former, former roundabout for London Road and the 131. So, the, the office report accepts it in special policy area, excepts there is a, there is a conflict in that respect. The policy area is designated specifically for benefit of racecourse, ancillary racecourse development in order to give some planning freedoms in an area of constraints, being within a rural area. So the policy, the policy report looks at, looks at the pros and cons, the benefits of the TSP site in this, in this location. We do have a willing landowner here. Landowner is the same as we see on some of the parcels. So this, this type of recommendation is not taken lightly by officers, but it's felt that there is, we do have a live plan application running parallel at the moment. The office report does note that there are amendments, in our view, necessary to that, specifically to reduce the number of access points from forward enter to the two access points as shown within the master, within the master plan. Officers have seen some further technical drawings and evidence that show that that can be accommodated within that site. It does have its constraints, obviously. Trees for one, ecology. We have, we have noise issues associated with the 131. However, we don't, don't think those issues are insurmountable in terms of a future plan application. And it's presented to date to members to endorse, accept the principle, albeit with a constraining factor on the number of access points. So, that's what officers will seek for approval this evening. The second issue is the settlement, settlement boundary. You'll see from the plan, the red line that basically cuts across roughly east-west across that field boundary. That is the new defined settlement for, this defined settlement boundary for Great Lees as per the allocation map. The rationale behind that examination and priority that was in order to preserve the setting of nearby listed building dotted in red there, known as Triceratops. So that, that was intended to give, give some protection in order to pull back that line. It wouldn't, because it doesn't necessarily, well, it doesn't follow the field boundary. In that respect, it cuts across that field. As you can see, the hedgerows do wrap north-east, north-east and west of that line. So, what we have presented in the master plan is, is an extension of built form beyond that red line. The office report notes it to be a technical breach. There's no getting away from that, but it does offer analysis of those merits. So, in considering that, mindful of the listed building, mindful of the technical breach, but there are some, some positives in terms of improvements to the natural hedgerows closing off that field parcel. So it fits quite naturally within the kind of natural field boundary. There, there are some recommendations made within the office report, following consultation with our listed building officer, which seek for a slightly greater setback. So, I think we're around 72, up to 80 metres from Triceratops. So a further inset from that, from that property. And an alteration to the scale plan shown within there, so that officers can be content that scale is reduced on that western edge as we get closer to the listed building. So, in a sense, we recognize it's this technical breach. Again, office report looks for members to endorse that, that change, because, you know, we have to accept that it does breach beyond the settlement boundary. Doesn't, of course, breach beyond the allocation as a whole. Members will note that north of that, we do have the green area notated as a recreation area, so it doesn't breach the kind of the outer limits of the allocation, but does breach the defined settlement boundary. In terms of Mawsham Hall Lane access, this is one of the matters that officers don't feel that we can endorse and present to members favourably. I think as, as Mr. Pugh noted, there are, there has been some further work gone into this by, by the applicants in order to convince us that this is a workable solution. So that, that access is shown to basically create a separate access for the northern parcel, which is in the northern extremity of the allocation. Will have some difficulties in accessing because obviously the main road, the main spider, spine road has to go through from, from further south, Mawsham Hall Lane, off the main roundabout through the development parcels to get to this northern extremity. So, officers are mindful of the potential benefits in buildability, deliverability, the potential for an emergency access in this location. But it's just felt from officers' point of view, there are some negatives associated with this. Firstly, highways objection in principle, in terms of breaking out onto Mawsham Hall Lane, you know, the option to travel north to the 120 or the potential incentive to do so. And obviously, the rural nature of that lane. So highways in objection in principle. The listed buildings, we've got listed buildings north in terms of the two cottages, and also Mawsham Hall south. Ecology and trees, there is obviously an impact in terms of breaking through that hedgerow and tree line. There are preserved trees along there. Whilst it may not necessarily result in their removal, that is quite, not quite detailed out at this point. So officers, you know, maintain the concern about, about the impact upon natural features there. And also bear in mind that it does cut across what is designated a recreation zone. It's a more of a minor point, but, you know, you know, the proposal is to kind of hug the southern edge of, of the allocation there, but that is a slight negative in officers' view. So, as members will see, the recommendation from officers is that this element is deleted. Obviously, you've heard from the applicant just that they reserve their right to detail this out further or submit a plan application. Obviously, we will deal with that on its merits at a point in the future, but officers don't feel that we can offer support to that at this point. As I said, I didn't want to go through the whole report in detail, but one of the areas that I did want to touch upon in a bit of detail was, was accessibility. Obviously, part of the vision for Great Lees within the master plan is this interconnectivity, a landscape-led approach, but this interconnectivity, a sustainable transport mode. So, just want to deal with three key points in terms of vehicle routes, pedestrian, cycle routes and bridleway. And then I'll move on to just, just sum up the recommendation. So, if I could briefly, in terms of vehicle routes, obviously, I've explained that, that the main vehicle access will be off Mawsham Hall Lane, a new mini roundabout off the main roundabout that, that is seen on the 131. That main route will travel westwards as a bus route. It is a main spine route. It's a bus route that then loops, the bus route shown in red, loops within the western parcel in order to give coverage for proximity to bus stops, both to the southern parcel and the northern parcels. That main spine road does travel northwards into the parcel north of Felice Curry Nature Reserve. Currently, the master plan is shown to be an emergency access only beyond that middle parcel into the self-built parcel, the northernmost parcel. But as, as I've said before, because officers aren't comfortable with the separate access at that point further north, that would involve, well, it would necessitate a change to that master plan document to enable vehicle routing into that northern zone from the main, from the main parcels of 7A. So, other things worth mentioning within 7A, obviously, the framework plan doesn't show every road on there, that's not the intention of the master plan. It shows the bus route and the main spine road and some, and some ancillary roads that serve other parcels around, but it's not intending to show every single route within those parcels. This is a high-level document intending to show how we get in and out, how the parcels are accessed. The other thing to mention is that there is a, there is a route shown that's a pedestrian cycle route south onto or through the southernmost parcel, onto School Lane. That is shown to be an emergency access route for vehicles. Again, that would be suitably bolanded, only used in emergencies. And highways are accepting of that in principle, given that that use would be very limited in reality and only in emergency. So, just, just, just to flip over to the side of London Road, obviously, 7B, we've got two access points shown as part of the master plan. Again, highways have sought to limit the number of access points within, within that. That has been reduced from the July revision of the master plan. So, you know, we're looking at two access points in there, which is broadly seen as acceptable with a, with a route, a network within that parcel, so that those parcels can be joined together. Worth mentioning, the TSP site, again, vehicle routing within there is shown as two access points within the master plan. In terms of 7C, so, the Landvest parcel, the north of that, so south of Banter's Lane, is shown with a separate access to probably deal with, you know, 10, 10 to a dozen properties potentially within, within that smaller parcel. The main vehicle route within, well, to serve 7C will be from 7D, and that in turn will come from Main Road. So that will go through the existing dwellings, so the 100 dwellings within 7D that are currently built out that will travel through. I know there's been representations made from existing residents there, but just the report notes that, you know, the intention was that it was a neither-or scenario and that is seen as appropriate by highways rather than using the northern, the northern access point to serve the entire parcel of that, around 100 units. Pedestrian cycle routes, again, is a big topic within, just want to touch upon briefly. Obviously, we have a debating session after, but in terms of pedestrian routes, so we have, between village, existing village and new development, we have, have, have essentially four key points. We have School, School Lane Bridge. We then have Chase Side Bridge further north than that, shown, shown the green arrow on here. We then have the underpass next to the Dogon Partridge Public House. And we then have a proposed new crossing just south of the roundabout. So, four key crossing points there. Obviously, there are some recommendations made within the report. The key one, as mentioned by Mr. Daniels, Chase Side Bridge is an area of not necessarily agreement between certainly highways, officers, officers and, and developers at the moment. But I'm happy to touch upon that further as part of discussion. So, in a sense, there'll be a formalized crossing point just south of the 131, which will hopefully achieve LTM 120 compliance, which is highway standard they're looking for at the moment. Dogon Partridge has, has some constraints because of the nature of the size of the underpass. Chase Side Bridge has its constraints. It's currently a pedestrian bridge whereby cyclists do have to dismount across there. And School Lane is part of the existing Sustran cycle network in any case, but improvement suggested by highways to enable easier walking along, along that route. So four, four key connections. Then within the site, we obviously have permeation within the 7A in terms of routes that travel kind of south, northwards and across to School Lane as well to break out onto School, School Lane West. In terms of 7B and C, there is an... In terms of seven B and C, there is an option shown to basically break through the centre point of, or between seven D and seven C, travel along the eastern boundary, along the eastern boundary of seven B, and then break out onto London Road and then travel northwards to the T S P site. Again, there's an aspiration to join up northwards to enable cycle network to join into the Sustran route north, which will enable access to Notley and Braintree beyond. Briefly touch upon bridleways, there is a bridleway improvement shown. So the current underpass next to the Public House goes through the underpass. And then you would turn right towards Mawsham Hall Lane. What's shown within the master plan framework and also in the wider documents is a route that travels east-west out to Domnay Lane to the west. Enables use of the byway to travel northwards. That enables a rejoining to the allocation to circumvent in the northern area of the recreation zone, then back onto Mawsham Hall Lane. So in essence, creating that loop for horse riders. So that's seen as a positive, seen as an improvement. So that's welcomed by the Bridleway Association and their representation. Just like, brief presentation, there's obviously lots more issues, topics to discuss. But in terms of officer recommendations, so master plan considered broadly acceptable. There is obviously a number of further considerations, mainly focused on highways. Requirements, suggestions that are endorsed by the local planning authority. So there's a request for a number of amendments, but that is not unusual. It's not unusual in terms of presentation to policy board, in terms of other master plans before members. So the recommendation beyond that is then for members to approve subject to those further changes being delegated back to officers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Did we want to address any of the public questions or?
I think Matthew can address some of those, in particular the residence questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just bear with me a second while I blank the screen to get a relevant slide up. Thank you. So as a pre-prepared slide, obviously, seeing the representations from Mr Booley. I have an image there of the rear of his property. So the diagram to the right-hand side essentially outlines a pair of cottages. Concern being in terms of proximity of that residential parcel, obviously shown in yellow. I think that in response to concerns, I think that officers would say that as part of the detailed discussions on an outline application or reserve matters or even a full application for that parcel, I think we're confident that we could achieve an acceptable separation distance there as per our development management requirements. I think that, I think that officers are quite willing to acknowledge and with members' agreement that in order to acknowledge that concern, I don't see an issue with pulling that parcel back necessarily from that residential property. Don't have a concern from the developers in terms of the arrangement there. As I say, in reality, that would have happened in any case. I think that, you know, I have no issue with, as you see, just the left-hand side of that. There is a green area shown to the west. Obviously, the one to the east is more substantial because that's related to providing a setting to Gubbins Hall further south. So I have no issue if members are in agreement to recommend in the change that the buffer is carried along that southern boundary to wrap around those two properties. I don't think that prejudice is the development parcel, particularly in any way, anything that wouldn't have happened in any case once officers dealt with this at development management stage. So I think there's acknowledgement that in terms of the representation that that can be addressed through a minor change to the master plan or the framework plan in this case. Just bear in mind that there is a green arrow shown on the right-hand side diagram that just show a potential crossing point. So members will note, there is a recommendation for that to be moved further west because of concerns about visibility around the bend on Banter's Lane in that position. So in effect, there'll be a restriction on what development can actually get that close to Banter's Lane. And I think that the landscape buffering that's shown to Banter's Lane at the moment is in response to officer concern about any properties that would specifically front Banter's Lane, both in terms of visibility on that kind of rural line as it is at the moment, but also in terms of restricting any access points or individual access points along there to serve individual dwellings. So I think, you know, we would anticipate that parcel to be served through vehicles from the pink arrow that you see north of that, so through seven B, there'll be an access through to seven C in this location. So as I say, no neighbour concerns. I don't think it warrants holding up the master plan at this point. I think it can be dealt with with a minor change to the framework plan if members are in agreement.
Members in agreement with that or?
If I heard Mr Jordan correctly, there were two alternatives he was suggesting, leaving it to the stage where the development management stage would ensure the distancing and the protection, or whether we should physically move the boundaries of the particular parcel so that that is fulfilled at this stage. In the interest of clarity for the resident, I think it would be beneficial to specifically change the boundary to achieve this, to achieve what officers are saying is broadly acceptable. So that's what I would like, that's what I would prefer to see. And I would also like to enable officers or instruct, I suppose is the word, officers to respond to this particular objective and to outline our approach to meeting those objections.
I think as Mr Perry said, there are two approaches. I think for consistency and to ensure, as you say, planning committee know what the parameters are now, then I think it would be worth us extending the green buffer to provide that level of separation at the master plan stage. So that's what we can try and do. Yep.
Is I addressed Mr Perry's mark by mistake?
Okay, so the recommendation is we put in a green buffer there around that property to ensure that his property isn't being overlooked by buildings that's going to be too close to it. Okay. Okay, thank you. Next one.
Chair, just bear with me a second. I'm just putting up another slide to deal with the second public representation, which I believe was in relation to specifically the T S P site. So just bear with me for one minute. Okay, so as I've said as part of the presentation, there are pros and cons. There are merits and disadvantages to the T S P site, which Officer Report runs through. I think the representation deals with an issue with the principle, which, as I say, the Office of Porters dealt with. I think that officers are comfortable with the principle and that's what we're seeking members to endorse. In terms of traffic movements and use of large vehicles, I think that I would like to bring in a highway's officers just for a small comment on that. But essentially, London Road is de-restricted. It does have heavy goods vehicles using it at the moment. So I don't believe there's an issue in terms of usage of that road for larger vehicles that would be associated with a T S P site. As I said before, there are some technical details around the access arrangements in terms of site displays and the relationship with the road network in terms of visibility displays and access into that parcel, which, as I say, I have an element of confidence that that can be dealt with, further work has been done on that. And that will be to be detailed out as part of the plan application. If I could just revert to Ms Gore or Ms Currie, if I could, on usage of London Road, if I may, if that's okay.
We've explored this in quite a lot of detail with the consortium. And the proposals will be to extend the accessibility routes in terms of cycling and walking along London Road. So that would probably involve things like looking at speed limits, reducing speed limits, traffic management, really to discourage a lot of through traffic from the main development going along there. So we wouldn't see that it would become a lot more intensified in terms of use. At the moment, there's like a depot haulage firm in Young's End that goes up and down there. That doesn't seem to cause a problem. The road's suitable for heavy goods vehicles. In terms of travelling show people, it's quite infrequent, the number of trips that they make to the T S P site because it tends to be at the end of a season. It's travelling show people rather than, you know, day-to-day travellers using the site. So they are very infrequent, not in peak hours. They are large vehicles, but the road is entirely suitable. And as I said, we're looking at traffic management measures to ensure that London Road is not used widely as a rat-run for traffic, mainly from the development. So the levels of traffic that would be expected can be accommodated along London Road, probably without even really noticing the difference with the development in place.
Could I ask a question to the officer there about London Road? People walking from these developments along the footway to Black Knottley for the supermarket, et cetera. The footway around, just to the north of the pub, the Green Dragon, is extremely narrow. I can recall taking my father's walker a few years ago and it was barely wide enough for the walker. And nobody could walk beside him. So anybody taking a pushchair up to the supermarket in Black Knottley, the Tesco's, would have a problem. So when you're envisaging the work on London Road, widening the footway, there'd be necessary, we want people to walk from these developments up to the Tesco's or even the employment facilities in Black Knottley. This is going to be extremely difficult. And if you, the question of large trucks brushing against the edge of the road with a two-foot-wide footway bothers me.
That's something that we are very aware of. One thing that tends to happen on routes like that is that there tends to be a lot of overgrowth on footways. So the actual amount of footway is larger than it appears on site because lots of the verge grows over the footway. So that's one of the things that you do to start with, is clear it back. And that would provide a wider footway in the first instance. And then when we are looking at the detailed design stage for the planning application, we'd look for a combined facility for cycling and walking, which would provide a wider path, both for cyclists and for pedestrians along that whole route. Because what we want to do is we want to connect the Great Lees sites all the way along London Road to the London Road A-one-three-one roundabout and then have a continuous route on to Horizon one-twenty, Great Knottley, and to the potential development at East Knottley within the Braintree district. So that's all joined up and we want as good a facilities as we can for pedestrians and cyclists along that whole route. So absolutely, yes, that's something that we will make sure is looked at in detail at the planning application stage.
Thank you, Chair. And just to supplement that, I mean, this route is probably going to be of primary use by people who may want to be employed somewhere outside of the, of Great Lees and connections up into those employment areas. And probably secondary school children as well, because of Notley High School being the closest secondary school to this site. It probably would be less so for the day-to-day kind of convenience needs of the residents here. Because of course, they are going to have a brand-new neighbourhood centre with convenience shops and probably with, you know, with healthcare and community facilities. So it's probably those kind of longer trips, which are likely to be cycling rather than walking, is going to be the main issue along London Road. But I think the point Ms Gore said is that effectively, the travelling show person site is going to be negligent in terms of the number or the amount of new traffic flow that's going to be along London Road. I don't think it would, it probably could and would even amount to anything in terms of any kind of count in the future. So in terms of, in terms of the development creating flow along London Road, I would suspect that's going to be relatively small.
Would the improvements to London Road be a section one-oh-six likely?
Yeah, that's right. So it'd be an off-site section one-oh-six requirement, application on the developers.
And from the question, her concern was about the sort of green wedge between Great Knottley and Great Lees. Is there likely to be lost or?
I'll start and Mr Perry can supplement this. But I mean, first of all, as Mr Perry said, the site in question is within the special planning policy area of the racecourse as it stands. So in some regards, the principle of other types of development has been accepted in the local plan on that island site, albeit though they are related more to the racecourse. The other thing I think probably we just ought to clarify is the fact that it's a little bit misleading, that plan. That purple doesn't actually show the significant kind of tree line and buffer, in particular to the north of, within that site. So I think we just need to be mindful of the fact that, you know, there is existing landscaping and it isn't the entirety of the island site that's being developed. So of course, new development in there is going to have an impact. But in the context of all the development that's happening around it and the racecourse, I wouldn't say that there's going to be a material erosion of that gap in that location.
So there's no plan for, as far as we know, for building opposite the T S P and further north to Young's End?
So opposite the T S P is, I think it's the woodland there, Lindas Wood. Some of that is outside of our area, I believe. It may well be Braintree there, but I think the boundary's a little bit odd. So opposite there is a woodland. To the south along the island site, I think I'll just defer to Mr Perry.
Thank you, Mr Potter. I'll just put up an aerial picture on the screen just to show the wooded belt. So Landseal, I think, if I just refer back to the officer report, because it is relevant to members that this land does form part of, obviously, the special policy area for the racecourse. But it does form part of the governing permission as part of the two thousand and three planning permission for which to enable the racecourse to be built out. Obviously, that permission is clearly implemented by virtue of the racecourse and its ancillary items being developed out since that time. So the officer report does note that the island site, which is a wider or longer version of what we see in purple there, which travels down to the roundabouts, was actually part of the development proposals, a part of the two thousand and three planning permission, which enabled parking and further stabling within there. So, you know, the reality is that this could legitimately be built out as part of that planning permission. So, you know, the reality is that this could legitimately be built out as part of that planning permission. Obviously, not going to be the case. The report notes that that is not a requirement of current racecourse operations. So there is already some precedent set for development within this purple parcel, as you see, but also for the south. I have no plans, or officers have no plans before us in terms of any other type of development. But obviously, that would be captured by a special policy area still in terms of land further south. I think that the representation might also have been concerned with development further north. Obviously, the further north we go, we do break into Nottley, who have wider aspirations for an extension kind of southeast. So I think there might have been concerns from the representation, as I read them, that this is just one step to developing something further north. But however, that would form rural areas outside the defined settlement boundary as revised, and it's outside of the special policy area as well. So we are into areas of constraint, albeit that the character of this area will inevitably change due to the size of this allocation. Just in terms of other comments from that representation noting of conservation of woodland and so forth. So the report notes there is some small loss of trees within there. But again, I'll come back to the fact that, you know, this does have permission to be built out in some form for parking and stabling. So this, you know, this has a legitimate reason to be developed out as part of another permission. So it's not as if this land is going to remain as such, and wouldn't expect it to be so as part of the special policy area either. So as I say, in terms of conservation of woodland, there are obviously constraints here. A lot of this allocation has constraints, natural constraints, trees, ecology and so forth. And it's for the planning application to detail that out. Officers don't have significant concerns over that. I think there is a loss of seven trees that were C-rated according to the officer report. So there's not an overriding concern in terms of loss of habitat or loss of trees in this location. So I wouldn't necessarily agree with the comments made from the representation in that respect. In terms of some of the other comments, you know, talk about house value and so forth, I don't think it's appropriate and it's not a material planning consideration to deal with that at this point. In terms of the comments about sellability of 7A, I think that what's been put forward in the master plan is some technical difficulties within 7A. Officers, as part of our stage zero, before developers necessarily get involved with putting drawings on plans, you know, officers obviously scope out, or DM officers scope out potential locations for these land uses. And, you know, we do have to recognise there are some real difficulties in placing the TSP site within 7A in terms of the constraint of those parcels and proximity to new residential areas, as well as school and neighbourhood centre. So as I say, the report runs through the principal, and officers are seeking support from members today on this issue.
Thank you.
Leno's Wood Lane, as shown, is actually the boundary between our district and Braintree. So this big field is green, I don't know if that means it's woodland, would be in our area. Whereas on the other side, and around Young's End, as mentioned by her, is in Braintree District, which she would have to consult Braintree about their development in Nottley East.
Well, I think the southern part of Young's End is in Chelmsford. But south of the roundabout is in Chelmsford, but the bit north is in Braintree. Yeah, it is, yeah. It's a little thin bit. Any other comments, yes?
Thank you, Chair. I understand that one of the concerns locally with moving the TSP into the island site is around screening. You talked about trees earlier, particularly in the winter months, so the site would be more visible. And I just wonder if any thoughts have been given to that really? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think that there is already a substantial tree belt which is preserved on the eastern edge. I think that inevitably, we would look for supplementary landscaping where possible. But I think the nature of that parcel, as you can see on the left-hand aerial, it is constrained in terms of its dimensions. There is a significant tree belt shown within there, along that frontage. And, you know, really from roadside, it does provide probably a better buffer than, you know, one can imagine if this was to be placed in Banter's Field, for example, whereby the trees are a lot more sparse. Within there would require additional planting. I think we do also have scope along the 131 to provide landscaping behind those potential, well, essentially workshop units that would be associated with the TSP site. So supplementary landscaping would, you know, be an ordinary consideration of development management that obviously we would seek to supplement, and obviously any loss will need to be compensated.
Thank you. councillor Willis?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm in the unfortunate position tonight that my hearing aid's gone missing. So I haven't been able to hear everything that's gone on. But this would appear to be the right moment to mention my responses to two of the public questions. I thought the one from Banter's Lane about the extending the the buffer extension was a very good one, so I hope that that can be met. And I'd just like to record, many members will not be familiar with the Showground Travellers sites. And the first period I was on the council, I was actually representing Riddle, which has no less than three. But I didn't know it. The only time I found out that there were any at all was when there was an application to increase the density on one of the sites. But right up until that time, I didn't have a single complaint or grievance arriving from that. And incidentally, this is a very modest site. Five units is not large. You know, the site that many people will have heard of and been concerned about down at, is it Dale Farm, down in the Crays Hill, has something more like 50 units on there. And there are indeed many problems associated with that. But this is a modest site, well-chosen, I think. And, you know, and as for the threat to mental health, well, you'll gather what's it, would be my reaction to that. And to the extent that, you know, anybody present is involved in that particular situation, well, all I can say is that was not my experience in Riddle. You're only going to get into mental health problems if you allow yourself to worry unnecessarily, which I appreciate that some people may do, but that's not the responsibility of the developer.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just come back on that, Chair, if that's... Okay, I mean, first of all, just for the policy boards, just to remind the policy board, as councillor Willis said, this is for a travelling showperson's site, it is a gypsy traveller's site. So just to make sure that we, you know, that you've absolutely got the terminology right and the use right. A travelling showperson's site is akin to a kind of a light commercial, a light industrial site, where, as was stated earlier, overwintering and the storage of normally fairground equipment is the predominant use of the site, rather than being what's more a traditional gypsy traveller's site. So that was one point. And I think the second point is that I think the buffer, I think we, as we said earlier, I think we can encompass that through negotiations with the developer.
The other point I should have made, Chairman, was that it's in the nature of these sites that they are empty half the year. During the spring and summer months, they're out running shows, you know, in various locations to which they move. They're not on these sites, and that relates to this question of storage. They may well store stuff there when they're not present, but that's not the same thing at all. And that's another good reason for not, you know, getting concerned about people's mental health. Six months of the problem, there will be nobody there to bother them in any way at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, Mrs Compton-Cook will be reassured. To, yes, councillor Sosian?
Yes, first a question about connectivity. Now, I noticed that the church in Great Lees...
Sorry, could we just stick with the showperson?
I thought we had gone on to general topics.
No, we're still on the positioning of the showperson's site.
Well, I certainly don't have any problems with that suggestion.
No, okay. Any other points? So can I ask if the board will approve the positioning of the travelling showperson's site, as in the report? Okay, thank you, okay. In terms of the extension of, as we heard, there were those three points that Mr Perry drew to our attention in terms of that extending beyond that red line in the northern part of 7A. Are the board happy to endorse that change? Any points? Anybody wish to speak against that?
Parish council representative here, and I'm afraid I can't remember whether the parish council had any particular comment about that. We can find out that. I think Mr Perry maybe will be looking that up as we speak. But while he's doing that, I mean, I think although, as Mr Perry said, it's a technical breach, the reason why we drew the line there in the first place has, the issue has been addressed in relation to ensuring that separation buffer with the listed building. And ordinarily, we would draw a line on a defensible boundary, a hedge or a road or something that's, you know, you can see. So it's quite unusual in this case to have it going across a site and having a small slither of land falling outside of the new settlement boundary. So in some regards, in harm terms, providing the harm can be mitigated in relation to heritage, then the only harm is a harm in relation to pure policy, where the light, you know, it's breached the line. And in this regard, officers feel that that isn't significant enough to warrant us bringing that back to that line. Mr Perry, his...
For clarity, I personally have no problem with that at all. But I think that I'd like to just understand that we're not being asked to go against a strong local body like, such as a parish council.
At this stage, I don't believe there were any significant opposing views to that in principle. We will, and I think Mr Perry has indicated that, I think we haven't found that to this point. So I don't, I can assure you that I think if there were some, you know, overwhelming local well, effectively dispute over that, then I think we would have picked that up through the consultation process.
Sure, as I say, I personally have no problem with it for the reasons that you're describing it. But it's just that in normal circumstances, the importance of a defined settlement boundary is very significant for local residents and particularly for the local parish council when they're considering anything related to that.
I think where we have that situation is predominantly where we have an existing built form. Whereas there is no built form there now, that line has been drawn to draw around future built form. And of course, because of the nature of the proposals that have come forward, we feel that extra, probably 15, 20 metres, isn't material and is probably better in urban design forms to follow the natural boundary, which is the hedge.
Anybody else wish to speak against that? Okay, so the board's happy to endorse that change? Yes? Okay, agreed. And in terms of the prevention of the access from Molsham Hall Lane, anybody have any particular views against that?
I mean, I support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify one aspect about what the objectives of this master plan actually would normally be. They would have this clarified for the benefit of the developer and everybody else, rather than hearing and understanding that the developer is not yet happy about this. And so I just wonder whether we are, I mean, what you're telling us is that we're not really in a position to approve a master plan which we know is in line with the developer's intentions.
I mean, at this stage, the master plan provides the framework. The developer has indicated that they will remove that link in relation to the issues that have been raised by the local planning authority and the highways authority at this point in time. And Ms Gore can come back in relation to the highway issues. But I see no reason why we would defer from our analysis in relation to a planning application at this point in time. Yeah.
There's not really much to add. We don't want a secondary access to the site from the north because the main access via the roundabout can accommodate the self-build units. So there's no need for a separate access. And we have got concerns about Molsham Hall Lane and the additional traffic because it's quite environmentally sensitive. It's narrow, vehicles currently overrun the verges as it is. There's very little scope to do any widening. And really, environmentally, you wouldn't really want to do any widening. There's very little room to do any passing places. And also, we don't want to encourage traffic to be running through the villages through Willows Green and then on through to Rain through the A120. So we're quite sort of like firm in our views on that. And that's why I think we've got to the position at the moment where we have made that as a comment in our recommendation to the planning authority, that we wouldn't support an access at this location. And the consortium has taken that on board. But the landowner obviously would like that as an option and is considering putting it in the planning application. But unless there's very, very, very good reasons at the planning application stage, our view on that would remain at the planning application stage unless, you know, they can demonstrate that they're doing lots of mitigation and stuff like that, which I think is unlikely because of the nature of the road and the usage of the road with the horses crossing on race day and, you know, the difficulties that there are with existing situations. So I think it's unlikely that our view would change on that.
Okay, so the board happy that the, content that the access from Molsham Hall Lane is removed from the master plan? Yes? Okay, that's agreed. Okay, obviously, there are lots of further considerations that we mentioned in the report. So now we have an opportunity just to discuss the wider implications. So councillor Sosian?
Thank you, Chair. I'm concerned about the connectivity to existing community facilities in Great and Little Lees. And I noticed the church is in Little Lees. And coming from 7A and from School Lane, perhaps you'd have to walk down Rectory Lane to the church. Perhaps there are community... Perhaps there are community facilities going on there, but it just highlights that different. I don't know if anybody can say, perhaps the officer, highways officer can say whether Rectory Lane would be a suitable way to walk down to the church and any community facilities there. But I think it highlights to me the difficulty of, of connecting two community facilities there and other parts of Great Lees. For example, the school, if the other school isn't built before the first unit, they'll be going down to the primary school in Aragon Road. But I think a comment on, I know people would walk much further. I've been reading Sherlock Holmes, it said that what Dr Watson went for a short walk of four miles this morning, which is nothing people would do in the 20th century compared to the 19th. But, and I guess maybe we need to get back to walking those kind of distances and cycling, both for our health and, and to reduce carbon footprints.
I think I'll just come into it there if, if that's all right, Chair. I mean, the main services and facilities were in Great, in Great Lees Village itself. And Great Lees and Little Lees, Great Lees Church is a significant distance out of Great Lees Village. And Little Lees Church is, well, Little Lees is quite a small settlement in its own right. And I don't think there's, there would be any other sort of way to get to that church. But I think the, the main issue is that both churches don't really have a focus of other community facilities within, around them. It is the centre of Great Lees that is the focus of the recreation fields, the pubs. There is a church, a different denominational church on, in Great Lees as well, shops, the primary school is, as councillor Sosian said, so that's going to be the main focus and destination of those people that are wanting to walk and cycle to local facilities. And we've talked about the crossing points and the accessibility in, in the presentation that you had.
Yes, councillor Pully?
Yes, on that, on that point, did I go to sleep by mistake? Did we talk about the bridge reservations?
Not yet. Would you like to talk about it now?
No, that's fine. But it's a convenient point for me to say that within the revised vision, there is a paragraph which is, which is really very strong about the desire to create one sense of community of the existing development and all of these new developments. So from that point of view, I, I am reassured on a number of aspects. I think the church was not something that I considered, but I think that within, in terms of the connectivity with Great Lees and, and the new part of Great Lees and all of the new aspects that are being considered here, then, then I think that I, that I, I hear the officers when they say that in the vision. I believe that the, the master plan reflects that. And that's something which I hope is going to be at the centre of everyone's desire as the development takes place overall. And I will come back about the connectivity to further to the north.
Yeah, I'm going to raise a, a number of points, but in general, I think the board would like to see greater evidence of the sustainability of the site, in particular the connectivity, as you were just mentioning councillor Pully, to the existing communities in Great Lees and Black Knottley. I also feel there ought to be an agreement between the developers, similar to that on the Garden City, bringing forward the infrastructure, particularly that the connecting developments to the adjacent communities, they serve all the developments, yet the developers will really have to come together and agree, otherwise it would seem to me that they're going to all fall on the developer of seven A. And that there is no kind of shared agreement that who pays for each item of infrastructure, particularly those outside the, the parcels of land being developed. And the timing of these, whether they should be in advance of the development or, or at least planned through, with their developments. And this gives me a problem, perhaps I'll come to some more detailed points in a minute, but in fact we just, maybe some aspect of this should be brought back to another meeting of this board in, in February. And I feel my many to that. It does strike me that this master plan was brought forward slightly prematurely with all these points of further consideration. That, that I understand that Officer Matthew Perry feels that they'll all be resolved in a couple of weeks. And, and a master plan with them resolved, being presented to us, say, in the beginning of February, might be better. But then later on, I'll go through the half a dozen points or so of particular things that were, where they were addressed in the, in the, in the presentation to us of particular points of further consideration. But I would like to see resolved before really presented to the cabinet, who may not really have the time to go into the details that this board has.
So is there sort of some agreement between the developers in terms of infrastructure?
Yeah, I mean, starting on the point in terms of the connections to Great Lees, and it's Great Knottley, Black Knottley would be slightly distant. So Great Knottley is where Tesco's and the new development there is. I mean, we've spoken about the connections at Great Lees and we've spoken in relation to that sort of a little bit longer trips in relation to probably cycling along London Road to Great Knottley. So they are within the master plan, those, those interventions. In terms of, in terms of actually funding those, where you have offsites contributions, then each developer would pay the kind of requisite tariff, as it were, towards contributions to offsite infrastructure that they're all, that they're all actually gaining some benefit from. So, and that's how we would deal with all of, any of those processes through the section 106. So it isn't that one developer or one site is being, is contributing more than another. It's, it's, it's contributing in a proportional sense because if you've got a larger development, you're going to need more infrastructure. Smaller development is going to have less, but if it's offsite financial contribution, then they're pulled together and pay for infrastructure that way. Thank you.
Back on that, I fear that these, if they're pulled together in section 106, the tendency is of them to only be available five or 10 years after the bulk of the development. And that is a problem, particularly, say, the London Road improvements for the, I'd like to see those a lot earlier in the building sequence.
Yeah, and that is just about the triggers, I mean, in relation to the 106, yeah.
Okay, maybe if the members want to discuss the, the Chase Side Bridge situation. Clearly at the moment, the Chase, Chase Side Bridge is not wide enough, I believe, for cyclists and pedestrians up into the normal standards. What do people feel about the, the Chase Side Bridge?
I think, I think for me, it, it came back into my mind because of the discussions about connectivity and the accessibility of local facilities to, in both directions for the people within the Great Lees and, and the people in the new development. And so that connectivity clearly needs to be part of the active travel aspirations of the, which are accurately reflected by the master plan. And so this bridge seems to me to play an important part in enabling both the most desirable forms of, of people getting from one place to another. So that view for me will carry forward very strongly into whatever future discussions there is about that.
Yeah, just, thank you, Chair. Just to agree with what councillor Pully has said. I think one of the comments that was made was that cyclists would have to dismount, I think, on one or more of the crossings. Just wondered how many of the crossings would they actually have to dismount on if the bridge, or the bridge obviously, if it's not improved. But I think it's important to make travel and sustainable travel, walking and cycling as attractive as possible. So I would definitely agree with what councillor Pully has said.
Thank you.
It may well be that I need some help from our highways colleagues, but my understanding is out of those four stars, it's only the, the third one down, which is Chase Side Bridge, which wouldn't automatic, you, you'd have to dismount. So the top ones are Pegasus Crossing, the second one is an underpass, the third one is Chase Side Bridge, and the fourth one is School Lane. So I think, hearing earlier the developer or the promoter saying that, you know, we can have a look at further work at whether we can convert or do works Chase Side Bridge to create a cycling link as well. So all four links would be cycling is welcomed. But what I would also just make sure that the board are aware is that it has to be deliverable. So it, you know, we can't, there's no point in us saying, well, we want a, a cycle bridge there, and it's just not physically possible to do that because of deliverability issues in relation to, you know, third party land in particular. But I don't know if Ms Gorken's coming on, on that matter.
I think Mr Potter has, has outlined it very well. Obviously, our preference would be for the Chase Side Bridge to be upgraded, to have it as a pedestrian and cycle route. We've been having a lot of discussions with the consortium about that, but we have to be realistic. It may not be achievable. It's very welcomed that, that they've now agreed that they will look at it further because that, you know, it, it would be much, much better if it can be a pedestrian and cycle link, but there are never any guarantees when you've got third party land. So we know we'll do our best through the planning process to explore the options with, with the developer and, and try and see whether that is achievable. But ultimately, it may not be. But with, with the proposals that the, the consortium are putting forward for, for the at-grade crossing across the 131, which will be Pegasus and the underpass and School Lane with improvements, hopefully for pedestrians and cycling on road, there will be good connectivity between the, the proposed developments on seven A and the facilities within Great Lees itself. So, you know, you, you have got four points and there should be good connectivity with crossings across Main Road by the underpass as well. So, you know, we, we will make sure through the planning that we, we get as good a connection as we can.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for that. And I, I think what my concern or my hope is that our strong feeling as a policy board as a whole, I don't think I'm putting words into people's mouths, that we support the highways preference, that we support the planning, our planning officer's preference that this fourth aspect of connectivity is achieved for both cycling and pedestrian in that area. And that that strong preference goes forward to the cabinet and the cabinet approves the master plan, if that's what it eventually does, with that strong preference reiterated. That's my hope.
I'd like to come to the next point about a bus link to Black Knott, is it Black Knottley? Black Knottley Employment and Supermarket and Doctors. And the suggestion that, that really we should have a mobility centre within the neighbourhood centre. Now, I know in the Braintree district and possibly extended up North Chelmsford, there's a kind of, it's a kind of dial-a-ride bus facility that exists that even if there isn't a formal bus route, that there is some work to try and achieve this. Because it is a concern to me that people can't get to the employment area in, in, in Black Knottley, the supermarket and the doctors. And from this mobility link that's referred to in the master plan, perhaps something, it could be a base for this, it's like a dial-a-ride bus, isn't it, or something like that, that operates in the, largely in the Braintree district, but affects North Chelmsford.
At the moment, the details of the public transport proposals haven't been established, you know, in, in great detail. We normally look at what the current bus service is to start with and where it goes to and what, what the connectivity is to, to local places like to Chelmsford and to Braintree, including Great Knottley and the local facilities. In this instance, what we would do is the county council would take a section 106 contribution, which would be a significant amount, and that money would enhance existing services, probably provide new services. And it would, it would look at various options, what's the best thing to do? Because sometimes in the early stages, it's better to have a, like a more, more like your dial-a-ride kind of service. So it's, it's like a smaller service. And then as the development gets bigger, it can support a, a more sort of like regular service. So it probably will be a combination of things, but it's really too early stages to have sorted out those details now because by the time the development goes ahead, you know, the existing services may have changed or, you know, it, it, we might be somewhere different to, to where we are now. So yes, we, we will look at various options for what's actually best for the development at that time, and it probably will be a combination of things.
And I'll just supplement that with, obviously, there is an existing bus route.
Yes.
There's an existing bus route that goes along Main Road, London Road, connects to Braintree. The bus route is the seven seventy, yeah. So, I mean, it's a relatively frequent bus route in any case.
It does go to the supermarket, which is on the west side of the-
Yeah.
Black Knottley and the employment area is even further west.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I appreciate that. And the DigiBus service that is being tried, well, it's actually in operation in that area, does allow those kind of more bespoke demand sensitive routes, responsive routes. So, but I think the point is that I think, just going back to the convenience side of things, for convenience shopping, there will be a shop in the new neighbourhood centre for those people just to walk to. If people want to go on a longer, you know, a bigger shop, people do tend, obviously they can go by buses, one of those options, but I, I would say the majority of people probably go by car for, for their big shop, if it's a weekly or monthly shop. So they wouldn't probably be trying to do their monthly shop on their bicycle, even though that might be what we would like them to do, they'd need a, a big basket.
So there's so much in the, in the master plan that's, that's being proposed that supports the ideal of, of active travel. And so that's fine. But so just to say that actually, of course, most people go by car at the moment, and that is not a strong argument for not talking about this aspect of things. I mean, it seems to me that what we are, I'm very reassured by the comments that you'll be looking in detail at what is the best, the best use that could be made of section 106 agreements or the further agreement of the bus company and the route that's described in here. But this has got to be the best option, if, if we to believe the master plan, the best option for new residents and existing residents of Great Lees. And it's those existing residents of Great Lees which have highlighted the fact that they're having to go by car to the supermarket and the secondary school and all the rest of it at the moment. And so from that point of view, there is an active travel goal here which has to be pursued other than by shrugging one's shoulders. I don't often accuse you of that, Jeremy, but, and so that's what I'm saying. And, and what I would like to see, I think it's the right place for me to propose this. In, when I was going through this, I, I came across the statement that the vision had changed from the original vision that we'd all seen before, which was a vision statement, which was very succinct. And I inquired of, of Mr Potter where the new vision is. Was I right in thinking that it was these four very long paragraphs on the section, whatever it is? And one of those paragraphs talks very much about the active travel and the connectivity aspirations, if I remember rightly. And I would like to see at the end of that, a phrase which says, including the appropriate connectivity with the facilities in the southern part of the Braintree district, or however you want to describe that. So I'm not asking you to define what those are, I'm just saying that it needs to be in the vision for the development and the, and the consequent impact on the wider area. That's what I'd like to see.
Chair, could I just add about the shopping? These convenience stores can often sell things at a, at a premium to what you can get in the, really cheap. So people who are moving into our new, new affordable social houses there and really having to get to the supermarket indeed frequently because they can't afford to have the monthly shop, but they need to go to a cheap supermarket, and that may not be the case, that the convenience store may not be as cheap. It, it might be, but anyway.
Okay. No, no, any, any other general points?
Yes, no, I'm just trying to think how we're wording it. I mean, I guess we are looking for strong, active links from this development to the Notleys, but I guess we're looking to Essex County Council and the Section 106 agreement to put that in place, yes?
The bus company will have a role, won't it? I mean, it's part of their obligations to see whether they can be persuaded to circumnavigate different places as they do now in Chelmsford. So they will have a role as well, the conversations with the bus company, and the Section 106 contribution, fine, and then whatever else we can dream up, the county council's own active travel plans, have a budget which they occasionally apply in certain directions, so that would be, that would be good as well. I wasn't trying to be too specific.
Can I say something, Chair?
Yes, sure.
I think there's a danger here, we're falling between what the master plan's objective doing, and what we do at planning application stage. Now, the planning application stage will look at the details, the design strategy coming forward, and look at the appropriate bus links, the appropriate accessibility. I think our objective here in this master plan is actually encourage the right accessibility, encourage that accessibility should be a primary consideration when it comes to planning application stage. I don't think we can be too specific at this stage. I do accept that if you're concerned about some of the vision, we can widen it out. But one of the things we can't do is actually address some of the deficiencies in the existing village. When we actually get into 106, it's about actually the needs of this development, that's what 106 has got to be tailored to. So it's about what its particular needs, or what this development generates, and that's what 106 can relate to. So there are efficient deficiency at the moment in the village, we can't really address that unless it relates to existing development.
I understand that, but the plan quite rightly describes the vision for this master plan, to encourage the overall future of the Great Lees village and area. So there is a little bit of a contradiction in there, but presumably it's still liable, this whole thing, so there are other ways of things that may benefit Great Lees itself, which if they were tied in with other bus suggestions, could be pursued. I am deliberately trying not to be too specific for the very reasons that you're saying, Mr. Green, I think, but that specific paragraph in the vision is a good paragraph, and it just needs that clause saying that, including where appropriate, links with the part that we've been talking about.
Sorry, Chair, through you. So, yeah, we can ask for that to be strengthened, of course, creating good, active and sustainable connections to local destinations is key, and we can strengthen that without, you know, specifying exactly what that's going to be, and I think it's right.
And I'm not trying to specify exactly what it's going to be.
No, no, absolutely, and I agree with you.
I'm saying that the existing paragraph is really great, it simply is limited to the Great Lees area and doesn't refer to the...
And I think what I'm saying is, well, I am saying is that we can extend that to destinations beyond Great Lees, and that would be in particular to the north, yeah.
Chair, would it be helpful if I just read out the section of the vision? I can't present that on the screen, but I think that one of the latter bullet points says, accommodate bus services together with new bus stops to ensure good, sustainable connections from Great Lees to Chelmsford and Braintree. So I think if it's that paragraph that Mr. Perry is looking to extend in, then I'm sure we can come up with some words that would...
I'm happy with that, I'm happy with the highways officers' comments, I'm saying that the vision needs to embrace that as well.
Okay, so is the board happy that we just strengthen up that vision to, you know, really emphasise good, active links, sustainable links to Notleys to the north and Chelmsford to the south? Board happy with that? Yeah? councillor Willis.
Forgive me if this isn't the right moment, but I'm finding it difficult to know when the right moment is, but I would like to express a welcome for the board, some broad features of these plans across the whole of the different sites. First of all, they are being addressed as a group in very much the same way, in the same spirit, it seems to me, as the excellent master plan we approved last time for the Garden Village, and yet they haven't got the advantage of the additional funds that the Garden Village will attract. In particular, I'd like to welcome the care with which they've established the historical assets, and also the local ecology, which seems to me to be quite unusual. The fields are smaller than typically, and therefore to retain the hedgerows as intended will be very significant. And I speak as somebody who was greatly grieved when a neighbour took out a whole lot of hedgerows, which were not dissimilar, and with no good reason. So I'd like to welcome that, and, you know, I'm glad that all of that is in mind, and it will improve, I'm sure, the quality of the development for everybody who lives there. So, yes, I think there's a lot to be said for the broad approach in the report.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My, well, almost the last subject, the, the comment, I mean, talking about 3.64 and 3.65, it talks about the alternative methods of powering the buildings. Gas boilers have to be phased out, and probably most of these houses will be built, and they probably ought to design them now without the gas boilers, because they can't be sure with a recession coming precisely when they will be built. So I'd like to see a commitment to looking at alternatives here, commitments to rainwater harvesting, standards of insulation, position of houses so solar panels can be or are fitted, and electric vehicle charging. Now, some of these goes beyond what we can get commitments to, but again, a kind of vision here, that they would do their best in these environmental matters, helping towards carbon neutral. With all these electricity, again, they will need to have greater power connections. I hope that they have envisaged that for the electric vehicle charging, and if they are powering ground source heating, this kind of stuff, it all requires greater electricity supply. So I would like a kind of vision on here, more than is, as is said in the master plan, the vision that we have at the moment is very sketchy in this area, and I'd like them, as we have done in other master plans, to be kind of more committed in this area, without, again, being too specific, otherwise Mr. Green will say that's a matter for the planning application, but a kind of vision here to do the best they can, hopefully going on about what the government requires, but recognising that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I mean, I'll start and, oh, sorry.
Chair, I wanted to note in response that one of the further considerations is a request to dedicate a section to discuss sustainable development initiatives, so this is recognised by officers, and informally I have agreement with the agent and developers' consortium that that will be addressed in a revised section, to hopefully address councillor Sossins and others' concerns on that point. I think Mr. Potter just wanted to make a further comment in relation to the Garden community, we just need to be conscious in terms of taking a step beyond what any other master plan has had to do, and that recognition of the Garden community was a slightly different element that we were dealing with previously.
Yes, so as Mr. Perry said, I think it's a little bit, I think it's fair to compare it with the other strategic sites that we've been dealing with. The Garden community is slightly different in the sense that it is a kind of a national exemplar, and it's trying to push the boundaries even further than, you know, any other site in the area, or actually in the country. So I think what we need to remember is things like, we do have our existing policies, we have our Making Places SPD, our policies is, you know, our existing adopted policy is for every new home to have an EV charging point, anyway. So we have the, you know, a number of tools already in the toolkit to enable us to do this, and also the fact that as this development comes forwards, you know, building regulations are going to be moving forward at quite a pace, and therefore, even if this development was not going quite as far as the Garden community, it would still be going towards that net zero ready development, which is the 2025 standard that's coming forward through the building regulations. So I think it's fair to say that it probably, we need to maybe have a look at strengthening and making that a little bit clearer in the master plan, that we're looking at the same requirements as we are on all of our strategic sites, and if that isn't clear in the master plan, then that needs to be.
Thank you, Chair, and I think I'm going to shut up on this point. Thank you for drawing our attention to the proviso in the master plan that's proposed to us, that it needs an additional section to cover this and other aspects of sustainability. Good, I'm glad to hear that, I think that was, I was surprised that it wasn't up there as the fourth of the three, a fourth of the three things that needed further elaboration. And so my question is, where is that, where and when is that additional section going for its approval?
Chair, so that's a question back to you, as members really, as to how you would wish to deal with, obviously, the recommendation from officers is that members delegate this through our director and officers to deal with changes before proceeding to cabinet. Obviously, how we've worked previously to deal with changes is that normally, Chair, you would nominate key members of the board to be in dialogue with officers to get that agreed in terms of specific wording changes, so I believe we can entertain a similar format to do that if members so agree.
I think councillor Purley's question was, where was it going, I think, was that...
Yeah, I mean, there's an existing section within the document, as I say, it probably needs to be supplemented and to ensure that the objectives that we've tried to achieve on all of the strategic sites are actually embedded within there, but it's effectively additional text to the section within the existing master plan.
The section, it's page 88, it talks about complying with the current policy, future building regulations, and fabric firsts. It's a bit short, and, you know, it can be beefed up with wider objectives.
The way that we use the word sustainability these days is much broader than that, isn't it? And so I read, when I read the statement in the master plan that's proposed to us, that it needed the extra section that Mr. Perry is referring to, I thought, good, because it certainly does need to underline the various aspects that go towards a sustainable development, each of which has its own detailed consideration in some other places, and that's why I was pleased with Mr. Perry's suggestion that it needed an additional section. That was what my question was about.
And I think going exactly to that point, the different facets of sustainability need to be, they are covered within that master plan, many of them are covered within that master plan, but they need to be brought possibly together a little bit more to ensure that there's an overall approach to sustainability that I think councillor Purley is referring to.
And maybe it's a question of looking again at the vision statement as it now exists, because it certainly gets a mention in there, to the best of my recollection, but the vision statement now covers an awful lot of ground, doesn't it? And there isn't something which captures the vision for this development anymore.
Chair, I think I'd expand, I think page 86 deals with integrating sustainability, obviously has a couple of key themes within there, housing is one of those, I think we could include an additional paragraph within that section, as well as expanding the housing element within a red box it's shown. So I think that, you know, we've got the ability to change that page certainly, to pull out what councillor Purley's talking about.
In this case, I think I would like the council board to note, in fact, in addition to the application for sustainability of this type of new park, for having certain...
As I say, there is a section starting at page 86, we talked about integrating sustainability. There's a number of headings there, active travel, health and wellbeing, biodiversity, rural structure, green infrastructure, church stick, community facilities, heritage, and it goes on to design of buildings. Now, we'll look at that and see how that can be beefed up and cover points of some of the concerns you're saying.
Okay, so the board notes that we would be looking for a stronger wording with regards to sustainability.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if this is a question for this stage or a later stage, but it's quite specific around the services and facilities. So just noting that there's a new primary school, but I think it's noted that the plan is to use the existing doctor's surgery in Great Notley. Are there any concerns about the capacity of using an existing doctor's surgery, or make that change at a later date, or will it be looked at at a later date in the process? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So as part of the neighbourhood centre, there is a proposal for new GP surgery, which has varying degrees of success, so it is proposed to have a new facility within there. We do have NHS consults on board at this early stage, so that's very much been welcomed by them. Obviously, there are intrinsic difficulties in potentially filling those spaces, but certainly there's a willing from landowners in terms of neighbourhood centre ownership, there's a policy requirement, and also NHS support for that, so, you know, that is not unusual there, we would deal with this size of site with additional surgery within the neighbourhood centre specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a point from councillor Raven, who unfortunately couldn't be here with us this evening. He says, on site 7B and 7C, the residents on Banter's Lane are concerned that the planning application has been submitted, that has been submitted for this site, has a three-storey main community building, which residents are concerned would tower over their properties, which have been limited to one and a half stories in their planning applications. So I just wondered if you could speak to that, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, George, just pull up an image if I may, in a second, of 7B and C. I think in short, Chair, there is, it was a concern shared by officers, so the revised master plan does seek to address the scale across both north 7C, which you see at the bottom of the aerial, as well as Banter's field, which breaks into 7B, north of that hedgerow tree line that you see on the aerial photograph. So there was a concern from officers as well as local residents in that respect, that perhaps three storey is not the most appropriate scale for that parcel, it's on the northern periphery of the existing village. I think, you know, that has now been changed, so that we get more of a blanket two-story within the scale diagram within the master plan, with the potential for a key, a couple of key feature buildings perhaps, that split the application site, which is 490 units, and something further south, to be around a SUDS open space area. So we think there is some potential for a three-story, however, you know, we sought to address that with our revised diagram now, and we would acknowledge that that should be predominantly two-story across 7C and into 7B.
The paragraph 356, I mean, the proposal is, you're changing the wording to some three-story...
The paragraph 356, I mean, the proposal is you're changing the wording to some three-story elements. So we're removing the up to 25%.
Yes, Chair, that is one of the amendments and one of the further considerations that we're seeking endorsement for.
Please support that, Chair.
Yeah. Right, so there are a significant number of further considerations that have been mentioned in the report. Unless anybody has any specific concerns about those, Mr. Perry, can we as a board take reassurance that all those considerations will be put in place and there's nothing controversial about them?
Yes, thank you, Chair, I think the only one highlighted was Chaiseye Bridge by Mr. Daniels. You know, we've heard a debate about that today, I think. But even then, there is a commitment to the further investigative work before we kind of present to Cabinet. So I'm assured from the developers' side that they're in agreement in terms of the further considerations that have been outlined in the report. And obviously, members will take my assurance that there will be changes made to the document to address each of those, as well as the normal typographical errors and other things that are pulled out by highways and education and so forth. So I hope that you can take that assurance from officers.
Chair, I mean, compared with other master plans, the changes are so significant, so many. I think we'd like to see this brought back to February, the, February the 28th meeting, which is ahead of the cabinet meeting, to see these changes and not taken direct to Cabinet. But I'm not really, I'm certainly not keen to recommend the master plan as I see it now. And we'd like to see those changes that have been discussed by Officer Perry and other officers brought before. And we can see them all put together briefly on, say, February 28th or some other time.
Right. Would it, is it the case that we can, there will be a time to see it on the 28th?
Well, first of all, I mean, 28th has, it's quite a, a number, two quite significant agenda items on there. And to add a third, I would be slightly concerned, seeing as that we try to just have the master plans on their own at board meetings. I think, I think my taking in listening to the debate, I mean, there were a number of things that members discussed, but actually, actually, when we boil it down, I'm not as sure there are as many contentious issues really here that can't just be dealt with through the normal route. That would be my feeling. As Mr. Perry said, Chaiseye Bridge is the, is the kind of, is a bit of an outlier there. But I think, and I hope, members could see that there were a number of different alternatives. If Chaiseye Bridge was the only bridge or only connection across the A131, then I think we would be in a very, very different situation. What you've seen tonight is four, well, five if you include the one by the travelling showperson's site, but four main connections, three of those that will be cycling connections. So obviously, we will absolutely do our best with our colleagues to ensure that we get a fourth. But I don't see that as being something that is so contentious that we would need to go round another cycle of consideration by the board. But obviously, that's for the board to decide itself.
I mean, it may not be that this will occupy a lot of time at the next meeting. I guess it will be a case of checking to make sure that all those changes are in place and that we are just reassured that everything's in place to be presented to Cabinet. But what does the board think?
Well, I would like to see that even circulated in some other way and agreed, signed off in some other way, that we are happy with these changes. And we still don't have the whole list of, you know, points of further consideration ahead of the cabinet meeting, which we'll go to cabinet meeting in March sometime, I guess.
It's February at the moment for cabinet.
Sorry, it's going to the cabinet meeting in February.
There's not a cabinet in February.
No.
The next one's 14th of March, when it'll be 14th.
14th of March next day.
Yeah, I think therefore there's time for this to happen in some way or other. I mean, you can work on the way of doing it.
Can I be clear about the concerns you have? Because we've already said that we'll look at the vision to embrace some of the changes, councillor Pully. We'll look at the integrated sustainability. We went through some of the changes which Matt highlighted and we agreed all of those. I appreciate we'll look at the cycle bridge, but I don't think we've been able to resolve that probably before February. So I'm just.
I'm not too worried about that individual.
I'm not too worried about that individual one. It is just seeing it and not, you know, passing our job on to the cabinet. We'll see that we have something, cast our OVA over this with these visions. That's what I feel, anyway. I don't know how my colleagues feel.
Thank you. Councillor Pully?
I mean, I think Andrew hinted at a possible way forward here, and that is that he would like us to see it in some form or other, so that we are reassured and so that, and so that, because this contains more quite significant changes as a document than the normal method of agreeing typographical errors and minor consequential amendments and so on that would normally take place. But I think that there's enough general agreement here with the thrust of it, enough general agreement with the specific decisions that we've discussed, to be happy that we don't necessarily need a full-blown debate about it. But what I do want to happen is that the cabinet is as informed as we are able to make it of our final position on this master plan. And that's a slight change from normal practice. And I think, I mean, although councillor Thorbax is doing a great job over here, I mean, I'm sure some of his colleagues may have interest in some of these. And we don't want the Tory spokespeople to arrive at cabinet to come up with all sorts of things that we can't, we can't say that we've discussed. We need to be as clear as we can be in saying to cabinet, we recommend this. That's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, as I see it, two options really. First option is for it to come back on the 28th as a kind of a very focus item just on key changes, which could be a possibility. And the second option is we circulate it outside of the meeting for members to form a judgment or agree those changes. Because I've got my cabinet dates slightly muddled up there, I mean, in some regards, it wouldn't make an enormous amount of difference. The only thing is that obviously, and Daniel might be able to advise me when the cabinet agenda is needed to be published and so forth, and it probably wouldn't be too far after. Yeah, okay. So provided we can get agreement there, then I think they're the two options available, open to members at this point.
Chair, could I just make a point in terms of, obviously, the developer is not permitted to speak here, but I don't really want to talk on their behalf. But it is worth noting, obviously, to go with Mr. Potter's option one does require those amendments probably to be done within the next two weeks. That is not without its challenges. I am assured that it can happen if necessary, because obviously, the developers' consortium have an eye on potentially cabinet in March in any case. So I say, I just wanted to float that, that there is some constraint, albeit I think we can achieve that because obviously, the print date works back from five clear days from the 28th of February. So time is very limited in that respect.
Before we make that decision, councillor McCroy, did you want to say anything or?
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I was going to make some rather general points, but I'll address this latest suggestion towards the end of my remarks, if I may. So obviously, this master plan is a different scale to the garden community master plan, which we looked at last time. But it does nevertheless contribute significantly towards the councils meeting its housing allocation, as is in the current local plan, the adopted local plan, and indeed, the demand for new homes, which we are very aware of. Plus, of course, we do have the obligation to provide travelling showperson's homes. So as far as that goes, we are fully meeting some of our obligations. But it's worth saying that it has been mentioned by others that the same development principles do apply here in terms of sustainable development, generous open space, retained hedgerows and trees or replacement trees where that is required, as well as the pedestrian cycle routes within the development and beyond. We've had all these assurances. So I thank the board for their contributions, and that's why we take these master plans through this process. But I would like to think that members have that assurance from our officers that with the agreement of your chair, your vice chair, maybe one other, plus myself and senior officers, that these concerns will be addressed. If it satisfies, if you actually need to be satisfied that it's actually happened to the wider board, I'm sure that can be circulated. Personally, I'm not sure it's necessary just to come to board and say, yes, we have accepted all your concerns. Here they are in black and white. But if that's what the board want to do, well, that's their decision. But as we said, you know, these other items can be resolved through the section 106 agreements, and that is the normal process. So I think, I think the board in broad terms is happy with what is proposed in the master plan. So I hope that, you know, we can get on with this without too much delay, because it is a delay. And we don't want to delay the start of this housing development. Thank you.
Well, so the option, so what do the board members think in terms of this coming back to the next board as a very sort of focus point that shouldn't cause us too much time? Is that, anybody want to speak against that or?
My personal view is that it's professional for us to ask that and unprofessional to suggest that it's not appropriate.
That option, but I defer to the other councillors.
Anybody have any views against or Catherine has?
I'm happy with that.
Want to come back?
Yeah, as long as it's a brief item.
Okay, do you want to make a proposal then or?
A proposal that the master plan involving the changes as discussed this evening is brought back before the February 28th meeting as a very focused item on those changes. Thank you, Chair.
Second, Chair? Second, Chair. Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that? Anybody against? Okay, thank you very much. Good, okay. So.
Just before you move on, I'd just like to support Mr. McCroy's conclusion that this, I certainly, and I think the board as a whole is thoroughly in favour of what's, of the progress so far, and don't want any delay to this moving forward either. I wouldn't want the consortium representative here to go away with the sense from the fact that we've discussed a lot of items in great detail and made a couple of demands here or there, or strong preferences here or there, to detract from our thanks for all the hard work that's gone into this. There's been a very extensive consultation and involvement of local residents and the parish council. I'm very aware of that. And that's been worthwhile because it has resulted in some changes, significant changes even so far, from the versions that we've seen in draft form before. So I'd just like that message to be loud and clear.
Thank you. Okay, so the other item is the work programme. Any comments? So you've got outlined the work programme there for the next meeting? Yes.
There wasn't much more I was going to say, because I think we kind of trailed it actually in the debate. But, I mean, we've only got up until the 28th because obviously, there's the elections coming up. So we felt to have the work programme fully populated after that time and going forwards. But the two items, as I said, the review, the feedback on the review of the adopted local plan and the consultation responses to the national planning policy changes and alongside this, the brief item that will come back in relation to Great Lees master plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, members, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.